Okay, so everything seems to be running smoothly. We will be good to go once Director Ward signs on.
And Director Ward is in the process of doing that right now.
Happy New Year.
Good morning. All right, looks like we have everyone.
We'll start the meeting in about two minutes or a minute and a half. Okay. Time of call, meeting of the Ventura County Planning Commission for January 6, 2022 to order. Secretary Berdusko, will you please call the role?
Commissioner Adukas.
Here.
Commissioner Boydston.
Here.
Commissioner McPhail.
Here.
Commissioner Garcia.
Here.
Chair King.
Here.
Okay, moving on to Agenda Item 3, please stand and join me in renewing our pledge to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Okay. Now on to Agenda Item 4. This is our annual meeting where we elect a Chair and Vice Chair for the Planning Commission and set the hearing schedule for 2022. I will now hand over the virtual gavel to our Planning Director Dave Ward, who serves as Secretary for the nomination of Chair. Mr. Ward.
Thank you, Chair King, and your service as Chair for the last year are very much appreciated. So for 2022, are there any nominations for Chair? Once we receive any of those nominations, then we will start the voting process. So are there nominations? Chair King?
Yes, I'd like to nominate Commissioner McPhail to be our next Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Adukas.
May I second the motion?
Are there any other nominations for Chair?
Definitely silence.
Seeing that, then we have a motion on the floor for Commissioner McPhail in a second. Renee, can you take a roll? Count. Commissioner Adukas.
Aye.
Commissioner McPhail.
Do I say aye or abstain?
Is that an aye or an abstain?
Aye.
Commissioner Boydston?
Aye.
Chair King?
Aye.
Commissioner Garcia?
Aye.
So welcome Chair McPhail to your role for 2022. I will now hand over to you the virtual gavel.
No virtual gavel.
Wow, you've got one, that's good.
Dangerous.
Rubber mallet.
And Chair McPhail, you now can continue on in your capacity. Thank you.
Before we have nominations for Vice Chair, I would just like to commend Commissioner King for doing such a fantastic job during trying times and technical glitches and carrying on with a smile on his face and not getting too frustrated at times, but I'd also like to commend the technical staff. Megan, when she was here and Renee for the excellent job that they've done in trying times, but I think Jim really needs to be commended for doing a fantastic job having to do all these virtual Zoom meetings. And Jim, I just want to thank you very much for a job well done.
Well, thank you. And I'd also like to recognize my Chair Consultant Commissioner Adukas, who without her help, I couldn't have been successful at all.
Well, she's got a tremendous amount of experience and we all look to her for guidance on occasion, that's for sure. Okay, with that said, thank you Director Ward. Do I have any nominations for Vice Chair?
Come on, somebody. Go ahead.
Have the other two talked to one another yet?
Yes, we have.
Well, I would nominate Commissioner Boydston.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, Secretary Berdusko, would you call the role, please? Oh, excuse me, any other nominations? Seeing none, Secretary Berdusko, would you call the role, please?
Commissioner Adukas.
Aye.
Commissioner McPhail.
Aye.
Commissioner Boydston.
Aye.
I apologize, it's Chair McPhail. And Commissioner Garcia.
Aye.
Commissioner King.
Aye.
Welcome, Commissioner Boyston.
Thank you.
Maybe by the time you're Chair, we can get back into the boardroom.
And have a real gavel.
And have a real gavel. Okay. Now to set the hearing schedule for the year 2022, the Planning Commission is available to meet every Thursday morning at 8:30 for the year of 2022. Generally, the Commission has been meeting the first and third Thursdays of each month, and it is anticipated to do so during 2022 unless the Planning Director anticipates a different Thursday that's necessary and updates the Commission as he does during the hearing date projections. For February 1 deviation is noted due to a conference conflict and the Director requests the Commission meet on February 10th and 17th. Can I get a motion to approve the 2022 Commission calendar? Commissioner Adukas.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Boyston, seconds. Secretary, oh, excuse me, Commissioner.
Yeah, thank you. Since it's seconded for the point of discussion, I just have one question. And I've been scratching my head on this one. For February, in the latest in the latest schedule published by RMA, there was no scheduled meeting for February, I think it was the 3rd, that we were moving to the 10th, and I have seen nothing since. Was there a new Agenda Item for a meeting on the 3rd that we're moving to the 10th, or is the 10th really not a scheduled meeting?
No, we were waiting to confirm that this would work for the Commission, and then we're confirming with the applicant. So no, there was nothing for the 3rd. There were multiple items on the 17th. And I want to be at one of the items in particular, and that's why we're asking to have a February 10th date.
So is there? Are there any items scheduled at this point for the 10th?
Yes, there'd be, assuming we get approval today, we would have one item on the 10th and one item on the 17th.
So you're splitting up the stuff that was for the 17th. Okay, I just needed clarification, is all.
Certainly.
It's been moved and seconded. Secretary Berdusko, would you call the role, please?
Commissioner Adukas.
Aye.
Chair McPhail.
Aye.
Commissioner Boydston.
Aye.
Commissioner Garcia.
Aye.
Commissioner King.
Aye.
Okay, motion carried, so we will continue on to Item Number 5, which is Consent Item. Resolution authorizing continuing remote teleconference meetings of the Planning Commission. Director Ward, do we need to read that whole thing?
Chair McPhail, no, you can certainly shoot this as a consent item and take a roll call vote unless the Commissioner would like to discuss the item.
I'll move the adoption of the consent items.
There a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Adukas. Secretary Berdusko, will you call the role, please?
Commissioner Adukas.
Aye.
Chair McPhail.
Aye.
Commissioner Boydston.
Aye.
Commissioner Garcia.
Aye.
Commissioner King.
Aye.
Okay, moving on to Item Number 6. Public comments that are on items that are not a matter of the agenda for today. Secretary Berdusko, is we have any public comments not dealing with the item on the agenda today?
I do not have any public comments at this time.
Okay, thank you.
And then I do just want to put up my, I do want to share my screen for the public comments.
Oh, that's right, excuse me, go ahead.
Okay, welcome to the January 6, 2022 Planning Commission hearing. If you wish to make a comment on a specific case item, please email your comments 250 words or less to planning.pccomments@ventura.org. Please indicate in the subject line the Agenda Item number. Item 6 is Public Comments, Not Addressed on This Agenda. Item 8 is Case PL 200122, applicant Stephen Tight. Staff will read your comment to the Planning Commission. Comments received after an Agenda Item will be made part of the record if received prior to the end of the meeting. Members of the public who wish to speak, please press the Raise Hand button on Zoom now, or if participating by telephone, please press star and then 9 to be queued for this Agenda Item 6.
Okay, thank you. Next item is Approval of Minutes for December 16, 2021. Do I have a motion?
Chair, Chair King, if I can, excuse me, Chair McPhail, if I can interject for a moment. Staff has discovered there are a couple discrepancies in this set of minutes, and so I'd actually ask the Commission to continue this item. And on January 20th, we'll bring back the minutes with some corrections on the 20th, and you can take your action at that date.
Okay, thank you.
Move continuance.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Commissioner King, seconded by Commissioner Boyston. Secretary Berdusko, would you call the role, please?
Commissioner Adukas.
Aye.
Chair McPhail.
Aye.
Commissioner Boydston.
Aye.
Commissioner Garcia.
Aye.
Commissioner King.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. We'll move on to Item Number 8. Case number PL 20-0122, applicant Stephen Tight. Project description Coastal Plan Development PD Permit and Variants for an Addition to an Existing Two-Story Single Family Dwelling With Two-Foot Encroachment Into the Required Ten-Foot Front Setback. The project includes an 844-square-foot addition to the house, 159-square-foot expansion to the existing garage, and 180-foot in rear balcony additions. The dwelling unit's height would increase from 23 feet 4 inches to 28 feet. Project location at 3084 Solomar Beach Ventura. Fraser Assessor's Parcel Number 060-0-352-265. And at this time, I would like to ask each Planning Commissioner to state on the record whether or not he or she has received any oral or written ex parte communication regarding this Agenda Item that is not already contained in the record before us on this matter. Please disclose the substance of that information, only if that information is not contained in the record before us that this matter. Secretary Berdusko, would you poll the Commissioners, please?
I'm sorry, am I taking role?
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Adukas.
I have no disclosures.
Chair McPhail.
No disclosures.
Commissioner Boydston.
No disclosures.
Commissioner Garcia.
No disclosures.
Commissioner King.
No disclosures.
Okay, at this time, I would like to turn the podium over to Case Planner, Michael Conger.
Good morning, members of the Planning Commission. This is Jennifer Trunk. I just want to introduce Michael Conger. Michael has joined the Residential Permit Section team about six months ago, and this is his first Planning Commission hearing. He's a great planner, so I'll go ahead and give the reins to Michael.
Good morning, Chair McPhail and members of the Planning Commission. My name is Michael Conger, representing the Resource Management Agency's Planning Division. And the project before you this morning is Case Number PL 20-0122, which is the Tight Variance and Coastal Plan Development Permit. Before we begin, I want to mention that any interested party may submit comments by email. Those comments can be up to 250 words, and they would be sent to planning.pccomments@ventura.org. Please indicate in the subject line that this is in regards to Agenda Item Number 8A, and staff will read your comment into the record at the appropriate time. So the project before you this morning is a request for a variance in coastal plan development permit to accommodate in addition to an existing single-family dwelling with a reduced front setback. The project location is in the community of Solomar Beach, which is north of Ventura on the North Coast. The project site is accessed from the Solomar Beach West Entrance. The project site has a general plan land use category of residential beach. The coastal area plan designates the site as residential high 6.1 to 36 dwelling units per acre, and the site has a zoning designation of residential beach with a 3,000-square-foot minimum lot size. The project site is addressed as 3084 Solomar Beach Drive. The property is about 3,484 square feet in size, and the existing single-family dwelling on the property was built in 1948. Under the residential beach zoning category, the required setbacks are a front setback of 10 feet, side setback of 3 feet, and rear setback of 6 feet. The existing single-family dwelling encroaches 2 feet into the front setback. Little bit of background on the property, I did mention that the existing single-family dwelling was constructed in 1948. It was constructed in compliance with the county's first zoning ordinance, which was the 1947 zoning ordinance, and it met the standards at the time. The front setback at the time was 25% of the lot depth, or the average of adjacent lots, and the parking standard was one enclosed parking space. Under current coastal zoning ordinance standards, the front setback is required to be 10 feet, and the parking requires two covered spaces. The property right now has an eight-foot front setback, and so it's non-conforming to the front setback standards, and it has only one covered parking space, so it's non-conforming as to parking. The applicant is now proposing in addition to the residence, but as part of that addition, we must address the non-conformities, including the front setback and the parking. So the request is a variance in coastal plan development permit, and this request would allow in addition to the existing single-family dwelling with a two-foot encroachment into the 10-foot front setback, which results in an eight-foot front setback equivalent to the existing single-family dwelling. The project would also include enclosure of the entryway to create an addition to the first floor, expansion of the one-car garage to form a two-car garage, which addresses the non-conforming parking issue, and 595-square-foot second-floor addition, a 108-square-foot loft above the second floor, and 180 square feet in rear balconies. Additionally, the project would involve increasing the height of the residence from 23 feet 4 inches to 28 feet. This is the site plan for the proposed property. And I've added a few notations here. The dark blue line indicates the property line. I should mention that the front is to the right of the screen, and the rear, which is the ocean side, is to the left. The front setback is indicated with a dashed purple line, that's the 10-foot front setback line, and the existing footprint of the single-family dwelling is shown in blue. With the proposed development, some additional areas would be added to the footprint, which are indicated in orange. As you can see, some of those orange areas do encroach within the front setback area, but they're aligned with the existing single-family dwelling's front setback. Additionally, there are second-floor additions above the existing first-floor footprint of the structure. This is a view of the existing residence from Solomar Beach Drive at the front. The orange dashed line is an approximation of the front property line, and that existing front setback is 8 feet. And this panorama shows the existing residence in relation to adjacent residences. And we'll go into a little bit more detail. Looking to the southeast, the adjacent residence maintains a four-foot front setback. This is a legal non-conforming residence. And the residence to the northwest has a two-foot 6-inch setback, which was granted in the 1990s under variance number 5038. These are the elevations on the west side of the structure, the existing shown on the left, the proposed shown on the right. And the south side of the structure, which is the beach-facing side. The east side of the structure. And the front side of the dwelling, which is the street side. Section D of the staff report contains an analysis of consistency with the coastal zoning ordinance standards. To summarize, the project meets all applicable coastal zoning ordinance standards with the one exception being in the front setback. As I'd mentioned before, a 10-foot front setback is required, and the applicant is proposing an eight-foot front setback. And that is the subject of the variance before you today. In order to grant a variance, your commission must make several findings. And to summarize those findings, there must be special circumstances on the property that merit a variance. The variance cannot confer a special privilege on the property owner. The strict compliance with the zoning ordinance standards must result in an unnecessary hardship. And the project cannot result in a detriment to public health, safety, and welfare. And the project must be consistent with the local coastal program. The sixth finding regarding hazardous waste facility citing is not applicable to this project. In consideration of those findings, particularly the ones considering the relationship of the property to the surrounding community, staff looked at 22 different lots in the Solomar Beach area. As part of that, we found that only six of those 22 lots meet the current front setback standard of 10 feet. 16 lots encroach within the front setback, including the project site, and 15 of those lots encroach further than what the applicant is proposing. I should mention that seven variances were granted, but the remaining lots that are non-conforming, which there are nine of those, are legal non-conforming because they were constructed in accordance with ordinance standards at the time, and they have not since requested any further coastal plan development permit to redevelop the properties. I mentioned the seven variances that have been granted over the years. Those variances have authorized setbacks of ranging from less than one foot to four feet. And in comparison, the applicant is requesting a setback of 8 feet. Section E of the staff report contains staff's analysis for consistency with the variance findings, and it also contains the applicant's rationale for why they believe your commission should grant the variance today. To summarize that rationale, the proposal would allow expansion of the residence while maintaining the existing front setback. They would not encroach any further than the existing residence already encroaches. The parcel width, size, and the configuration of the dwelling on the parcel limits the ability to expand, and the CCNRs for the Solomar Beach community further limit C-word expansion. Strict adherence to the setbacks would require major structural modifications to accommodate a garage expansion, which is necessary to meet the parking standard. And finally, front setback encroachments is the predominant development pattern in the area. This project includes both a variance and a coastal plan development permit, so there are also findings to make for the coastal plan development permit, and those are referenced in Section F of the staff report. And to summarize, the project is consistent with the local coastal program, compatible with the character of surrounding development, compatible with area land uses, would not be obnoxious or harmful to adjacent properties, and would not result in a detriment to public health, safety, and welfare. The project was subject to the California Environmental Quality Act. Staff completed an initial study and mitigated negative declaration, and that was circulated for review in October and November of last year. And the mitigated negative declaration determined that there would be a potential for an impact to archaeological resources. However, the applicant is proposing to incorporate a mitigation measure into the project, which would reduce that impact to a less than significant level. The mitigation measure that's being incorporated into the project is archaeological and Native American monitoring during ground disturbance activities. And I wanted to mention a few clarifications. And I wanted to mention a few clarifications and corrections. Staff was contacted by both Commissioner Idukis and Commissioner King. And some typos were noted in the staff report. And just to clarify, page five of the staff report mentions that comments and responses to comments are included in the mitigated negative declaration. I wanted to clarify that there were no comments on the mitigated negative declaration. Exhibit four, page fifteen, which is part of the mitigated negative declaration, there's a sentence fragment at the bottom of page as part of the and that sentence fragment would be deleted. And finally, on exhibit four, page forty one, in the chart listing for item nineteen B, there is a redundant statement, will the proposed project is repeated? And so that would be deleted as well. So at this time, staff is recommending that your planning commission certify that the planning commission has reviewed and considered the staff report and all exhibits there too, including the proposed mitigated negative declaration, the conditions of approval and mitigated monitor monitoring report, and has considered all comments received during the public comment process. Two, find based on the whole of the record before the planning commission, including the initial study and mitigation measure, that there is no substantial evidence that the project will have a significant effect on the environment and that the mitigated negative declaration reflects the planning commission's independent judgment and analysis. Three, adopt the mitigated negative declaration and conditions of approval and mitigation monitoring and reporting program. Four, make the required findings to grant the variance in coastal plan development permit pursuant to section eighty one eighty one dash three point five of the Ventura County CZO based on substantial evidence presented in in sections E and F of the staff report. Five, grant the variance in coastal plan development permit case number PL twenty dash zero one two two, subject to the conditions of approval. And six, specify that the clerk of the planning commission is the custodian and eight hundred South Victoria Avenue Ventura, California nine three zero zero nine is the location of the documents and materials that constitute the record of proceedings. Once again, I will mention that any interested party may submit a comment by email. You can email that comment of up to two hundred fifty words to planning dot PC comments at Ventura dot O R G. Please indicate in the subject line, agenda item number eight A, and staff will read your comment into the record during the public comment period. So this concludes staff's presentation. Staff is available for any questions, and we also have the applicant, Mr. Stephen Tight available as well.
Thank you, planner. Conger. Any questions of staff, Commissioner Boyston?
Had a couple of questions. One, how much does it cost to file for a variance?
Okay.
Commissioner Boydston, this is Jennifer Trunk. So the intake for a coastal plan development permit is, I believe, two thousand dollar deposit. We also collect on behalf of environmental health and a public noticing. The variance is inclusive to that initial application fee.
Okay, I was just wondering where, in a situation where when somebody is going to be doing something new to to their house on the in this part of the coastline, more than likely, they're going to fall back and and ask for a variance. And I just wondered, you know, why we have to go through this process every time when variances are are, you know, the norm out there?
Our our code actually directs the planning commission as the decision maker for variances.
Right. Is there a way to not have a variance and to reduce that ten foot yard setback?
We would have to amend the development standards for front setback specific to this zone.
Right, but that could be done.
It could be done.
Okay, thank you.
That legislative action would be something that the commission would review, take a recommendation on, and the board would act on. And then it would go to the coastal commission, and there's a certification process in our local coastal program. Those can be challenging to undertake, but that would be the process.
Is is just a follow up. Is it a worthwhile cause from your standpoint?
We'd want to take a look at other jurisdictions too, to see if this similar type of thing, an older neighborhood transitioning, making changes, how many variances have been approved and supported in the past to try to provide some data and facts to supporting making that change. So that would be something that staff would undertake to do that. So if this was something that the commission was seeking, ultimately, the board sets our work plan. So it would be an action from the commission making that suggestion to the board that the planning division would take forward and let the board consider and see if they wanted to add that into our work plan. We are working on noncoastal ordinance changes and making adjustments. Been working on that for the last year, year and a half. There have been a lot of other workload items delayed part of that project team. But those are comprehensive updates that we're doing. They don't require coastal commission action because the noncoastal zone. But you're probably going to see during this calendar year part of those updates. And so that might be an opportunity to reflect and also provide a recommendation to the board on some other observations that your commission has about both ordinances, coastal, noncoastal, if you so choose.
Thank you.
Any other questions of staff? Then I will open up.
Sorry, Chair McFell. I had a quick question about just the neighborhood context. Look, this is just a quick question, but it looks like there really are no sidewalks in that neighbor, at least on that street. Is that typical for that whole community that there is no public sidewalk?
That's correct. It's a private road and it's in a gated community.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions of staff? Hearing none, I will open up the public hearing. Does the applicant have anything they would like to say? Mister Tight, do you have anything you would like to mention? You're muted.
Thank you. I I do want to appreciate all of the support from the planning department that I've been working with. And I also appreciate the issue raised by the commissioner earlier that the homes in our area, the older homes do require this sort of a variance, I think generally. And it might be something for you to consider as you go forward in 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 addressing to avoid these one by one requests for for variances. But again, I I appreciate your help in supporting this request.
Any questions of the applicant? Hearing none. Secretary Dusko, do we have any Zoom or written comments?
I don't have any public comments at this time.
Okay, then I will close the public comment. And we will have discussion from the commissioners. Does any commissioners have anything they'd like to say? Commissioner Dukas?
I'm ready to make a motion to approve the recommended actions.
Is there a second?
Second. I'd like to check in that.
Commit seconded by Commissioner King. Is there any discussion? Commissioner Boyston?
I'd like to, I don't know if this is the time, but I I think something should be looked at in amending the the setback requirement for this area. Or at least looked into it. Because I I don't think that requiring everyone to get to go through this process, I think it bogs down our system and is unnecessary.
Okay, why don't why don't we bring that up under item number nine? Discussion item B, items the planning commission may wish to introduce. I think that would be the appropriate.
Perfect.
Secretary Dusko, would you call the role, please?
Commissioner Idukis?
Hi.
Chair McVale?
Aye.
Commissioner Boydston?
Aye.
Commissioner Garcia?
Aye.
Commissioner King?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries five oh. We'll move now to item number nine. Report by planning director and board actions and other matters. Director Ward, you have the floor.
Thank you, Chair McVale. I don't have any reportable items with the board of supervisors at this time. They've been on part of their holiday break in December. Their next meeting is next week. I do have our schedule and can let you know that we do have items scheduled for January twentieth. We have a quest for a bed and breakfast conditional use permit. This is up located in the Ojai Valley at three, three, four and three, five, zero East Villanova Road. We also have an appeal of a director's denial of a conditional use permit for the installation and operation of a noncommercial ham radio antenna. This is located in the Thousand Oaks Oak Park area, two zero six five Kaia Yucca. Then in February, as we discussed earlier today in the approval of your twenty twenty two calendar, we will have a meeting on February tenth. This will consider an appeal of the director's approval of an AT and T Ojai wireless facility conditional use permit. And this is located at five eleven Fairview Road. We also have another appeal on February seventeenth. This is a director's approval for the Carbon California Basenberg Lease Modified Conditional Use Permit. This is located north of the city of Fillmore. Looking ahead for the months of March and both hearing dates on the third and the seventeenth, we have multiple items at this time. So we're starting off busy for the first part of the year. I also wanted to share with the commission one other item that might be of interest, and I'm going to try to do my share screen. Just a moment here if I can get it. Showing correctly. And it's not sharing. Okay. Hopefully. Do you all see a SCAG? Okay. So we just recently learned about a program. It's a leadership law policy leadership program. And this is something available through cohorts of local communities in the SCAG region. And it is focused on really housing policy related work. And it's intended to engage key community members. And we'll focus on the production of housing preservation, promotion of equity and inclusion and protection for tenants and small landlords and preventing displacement. And so it's a ten month program. And these items will cover a whole series of topics that look quite interesting, some of which a lot of the commissioners would be familiar with, but other aspects of this is broader. And we are looking as a county of of applying for some staff and decision makers, which could include a planning commissioner. And so showing on the screen gives you a couple of their session topics. There are ten meetings that would occur throughout the year over a ten month period. And then there's also separate meetings that occur in between these as the cohort, the smaller group that would be Ventura County, which is anticipated to be four to six members that would interact together. So these are intended to be online. The Ventura County cohort that would be created would meet the last Thursday of the month. And it's from two to five thirty. A couple other, here's a few more details. It kind of gives you an idea of what the time commitment would be like. But they anticipate is those three hours engaged together on that Thursday, and then there'd be some time dedicated in between those once a month meetings that are allowing for the members to read and do some homework in a sense and working together. So it's an interesting item. And we are looking at one or two county members applying for this. So if there's an interest by any of the planning commissioners, I'd like you to reach out quickly if this speaks an interest and I can forward you the details and we can talk more. The application process is not not intense. And we would certainly assist if you would like to do that. The application deadline on this is Monday the tenth, so it's coming quickly. But just reach out to me after the hearing if you like, and we can talk a little bit more about it. And those were the items that I had to report out to you. Thank you.
Oh, thank you, Director Ward. Go ahead. You had something else?
Oh, I I just saw Commissioner Idukis asking a question, I think.
Commissioner Dukas?
I just want to say that the ham radio appeal on Kaia Yucca is in Thousand Oaks, not Oak Park.
Oh, thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Boyston, would you like to restate your request for item to be brought up later?
Yes, I'd like to see staff look at the possibility in this area of Solomar Beach of modifying the front yard setback to be more consistent with what is happening out there so that as lots develop, future homeowners do not need to go through a variance process.
Commissioner King?
Just in support of Commissioner Boydston's recommendation, but because we have several beach communities, I think it would be good in preparation for that agenda item that staff could examine any other beach communities where this might be relevant because ultimately what the commission is is apparently going to consider is asking the board to consider moving forward on a process to motive modify the local coastal program. And that's a fairly involved process, and I want to make sure that we don't do it for one neighborhood when it might apply to a number of neighborhoods. So just, yeah, I thought I would mention that.
That sounds reasonable to me.
Director Ward?
So Chair McVale, commissioners, I think what I'd like to do is I could reach out to Commissioner Boydston in particular, and we can pull together some information and bring this back as a topic for the commission. We did this similarly, as you might recall, with Commissioner and Chair at the time White with one other item that was a recommendation to the board. And that way we can get it agendized and that will allow if there's any public comment as well about it. And then you would formalize your recommendation to the board. So let's proceed with that. So probably either coming back at a February or a March date. I do hear Commissioners King about, okay, what other neighborhoods? So I want to go back with my staff a little bit without a significant study. I'm not talking about that, but just some clarifications with my management team and some thoughts about other neighborhoods. And then I will engage with Commissioner Boydston, and so that might modify some thoughts he has as a consideration for your full commission and bring it back to you.
Big clues to me.
Thank you, Director Ward. Any other comments by commissioners? Staff? Oh, excuse me, Commissioner Dukas?
I just want to say, attaboy, Chair McVale. I know that you had practice at this one time, and I just wanted to say thank you again and recognize Commissioner King for a job well done this past year.
Absolutely.
Well, I want to thank staff because this was a pretty easy agenda for my first one or second one, whatever. So I want to thank staff for that. With those comments, meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
To everybody.
Bye bye.
Bye.